Good evening, Somers. This is the regular meeting of the planning board for December 11th, 2019. And can we open the meeting with a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A small explanation. The chairman, John Curry, is not here today. Neither is Dennis McNamara. So unfortunately, you have me running the meeting. So bear with me. Barbara, can we have a roll call?
Chairman Curry. Ms. Gannon?
Here.
Mr. McNamara. Ms. Urbino is acting chairman?
Here.
Or chair, I should say. Mr. Goldenberg?
Here.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
And Mr. Zabardo?
Here.
Well, a quorum being present, we can carry out this meeting. And we'll start out with the minutes of October 16th. Are there any concerns, corrections, additions, questions from members of the board?
No.
No, I saw them online and I'm fine too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, would somebody provide?
Make a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
A second. Minutes are adopted as presented. Okay, if I can find the agenda, we'll go to the next. First item is a project review, permanent application for the removal of Dean's Bridge P and Plum Brook Bridge M. Application by New York City Department of Environmental Protection for environmental permits, including wetlands permit, tree removal permit, stormwater management and erosion and sediment control permit, and steep slopes permit for the removal of the Dean's Bridge P located at the end of Dean's Bridge Road on the border of North Salem and the Plum Brook Bridge M located between Roots 100 and 138. With the officials representing the city?
Yes. Hi, my name's Paul Costa.
Identify themselves and?
Yes, I'm Paul Costa with New York City DEP.
Would you repeat your last name?
Paul Costa, C-O-S-T-A.
Thank you.
Paul. I'm here tonight with our design consultant from Horace Dean Hanover, Ron Roman, and Victoria Carpenter, which is with NTEC, our environmental engineering consultant. We're here to follow up on the permit application.
Okay. Can we hear from our engineer?
Sure. So we issued a memorandum on both. I'll only review one. The comments are consistent between the two. We went over it by permit, so we're just looking for some, you know, relative to threatened and endangered species, there are some bats, so we want to make sure that we're clearing any tree cutting that's occurring during the right period of time. So we're just going to make sure we have those notes on the plan. There was also a reference relative to aquatic wildlife about efficient passageway, and we're just interested in the specifics of what that looks like, so that as we're monitoring that construction, we have that level of detail, so we can do that during the fieldwork. Looking for, relative to the lead pollution and the mitigation, we've identified, or you've identified that there are some lead paints containing lead. And we're looking, I think it was referenced that there's an approved site-specific safe work plan, waste management plan, and detailed specs. It'd be nice to have, to help provide a copy of the DE-proved documents to the board. Relative to stormwater management and erosion control, there's, it's really a series of details that we're looking for. I won't go through them all, but just some minor items relative to soil erosion and sediment control. Tree, you know, we have some comments on the tree removal, that submitting plans indicating the trees that we're going to protect, and any details around the restoration around the trees, the number, species, locations, et cetera, of trees that are going to be planted. And additional wetland comments may be forthcoming. We're going to, I know the last time the board had some questions about the delineation, and we're going to be coordinating a site visit. Of course, the snow didn't cooperate us to verify the limits of some of the wetlands identified, I think specifically for the Plum Brook Bridge. So that's the extent of our comments. And, oh, lastly, that public, the applicant shall furnish copies of any permit approvals issued by authorities outside of the town, and shall provide details and specs for vehicle barriers post demolition, including landscaping plans for visual and site restoration purposes. So that's the extent of our comments.
Do you have any comments about his comments on?
Maybe just rest of the work plan, because? Yeah, so on the environmental work plan for the lead paint removal, you know, we set up a specification that has strict requirements for the qualifications. It's, you know, specialized work, licensed work. We don't actually develop a specific plan. The contractor gets hired, you know, through our bid process, and they submit a work plan.
Okay.
That work plan, this will happen, you know, our bid process takes some time. So we're talking about something that, you know, we'll be bidding this job this spring. You know, it'll probably want to be till next fall that we would receive the work plan. Now, that work plan goes through our environmental health and safety group, and it kind of was a follow-up to last month. What we'd like to do is, you know, ensure there's a commitment here that when that work plan comes in, that at that time, before we approve the work plan, that we sit with the town, sit with the town engineer, receive comments, have your, you know, your concerns incorporated, before we approve that contractor's work plan.
Okay, so maybe what we can do, we'll ultimately make that a requirement of prior to issuance of building permit. So we can move through this process prior to issuance of building permit, so you can get through to town planning board, and then prior to the issuance of the building permit, we can just do that review that you suggested.
Okay, so I understand. So that they can apply for the building permit, which I understand, if you're taking something down or putting it up, you need a building permit. What can we do officially as a board?
Well, in all honesty, we probably just, we're not, would likely not provide a whole lot of comment on that. It's just more so that we have, we have an understanding of what their management practices are going to be.
And do we do that in the form of a memo?
Well, I think that what it winds up is this board is ultimately going to issue an approval, and I think it becomes a condition of that approval, very similar to other conditions that we would issue on any other approval, that prior to issuance of a building permit, that they would need to provide that documentation to the town for my review and approval. And I think that that's probably acceptable.
Okay, we're going to issue an approval.
Right.
That means that we're going to vote.
Not tonight. I think we've got to set a public hearing. I mean, there's a process.
Right, right.
At the end of the planning board process, you're going to issue a resolution for all these permits.
Right.
And one of the conditions will be, prior to issuance of a building permit, or the physical permits themselves, that those, that condition we need to satisfy.
Okay. My next question would be an attempt to set a site walk.
Yep.
We can just gamble and pick a date and hope it doesn't snow?
Yeah, we could do a site walk, and also, I think we could do that concurrently with setting the public hearing, too. Right, we can try to get that done between now and the next meeting, although you're right, who knows what's going to happen with this now.
Exactly. What, how does the rest of the board feel about setting, setting a date for a public hearing, and do we want to set January for the public hearing and try to get a site walk before then?
I don't have a problem with that.
You don't have a problem with that?
It's going to be 53 and rainy tomorrow, so by this weekend, there'll be no, there'll be no snow on the ground, I would imagine, by this weekend.
I have another suggestion, suppose, and we set a site walk for February. I mean, a public hearing for February, which would give us more time for a site walk. Rather than January, because January 8th, I think, is our next meeting.
I don't know if that works with your timeline.
It should, we'll be fine, but just for point of information, there's a scheduled meeting with Supervisor Morrissey next week, the 18th, to go to the site. Really, it's more about, you know, some of the requests for Dean's and what we'll be doing at the site, so I think they're going to go over to Plum Brook. So I just wanted to mention that in case the board wasn't aware.
What time?
Yeah, I'm not sure if I have the time. Now, you know, that might not be the same meeting. This is for Supervisor Morrissey to get a flavor for the site.
I'm just thinking for you.
But we could be available anytime. I mean, moving to February isn't, wouldn't hurt our schedule.
Okay.
I mean, if that's for the public hearing, if that's the question.
If you want to set the public hearing for February, and then we'll start setting dates and if they, for site walks, and if they get pushed back, we have, you know, a fair amount of time to get that accomplished.
Right, right, okay. So somewheres here, I have the meeting schedule for February.
I don't know, did you have any other questions on the comments? Any other thoughts on the comments that you wanted to get clarification on? I think they're all relatively minor, honestly.
Yeah, actually, Ron Roman, Horace Dean Hanover, project manager, we did receive the memorandums for both packages. We did actually review them. They are pretty straightforward.
Right.
It looks like, I think you reviewed probably our 90% submittal, so 100% submittal pretty much addresses all your comments.
Okay, great.
Along with, we already have responses drafted, so we're going to submit the package back to you folks with our responses to your comments. Also, we're going to submit the, we have approved by New York City DEP SWIP already with the NOI incorporated in that document, so you'll have that. The landscaping plans have been developed, working with New York City DEP landscape restoration experts, so we have those details as well. So you'll see a lot of that. The barrier protection is a New York City DOT item, so that's a standard sheet, so we'll incorporate that, and we'll forward that for your review as well.
It's great. It sounds like, I think, probably at next meeting, it'd be a good idea to go over those. I'm sure the board's going to be quite interested in the public safety, how are we going to prevent traffic from driving off, you know, driving in, and the other, the landscaping elements, I would imagine.
And that would come up at the next meeting.
And I think that'd be a good thing to set for January, to look at those.
Yeah, I think to address your question about the traffic, there's permanent and temporary, there's temporary works on traffic control during construction, and there's also permanent signage with necessary barricades for vehicular traffic to both those sites, because there is recreational opportunities at both these locations. We have to maintain, as well as some utilities out there that have to be maintained for their respective utility company. So we do have those details and signage in the 100% plans as well already.
Just want to point out that the board received two comments, one from the Open Space Committee.
Yes, I was just going to read it.
Okay, then go ahead. And the Energy and Environment Committee that were forwarded to the applicant is, go ahead Nancy, to identify what those issues are. But let me just say one other thing. The lead agency on this is the DEP. So no matter what we do as we move forward, no end action can be taken until DEP issues its negative declaration. So you can do a recommendation, I think, but they are the ones, and that's been clarified. We never got any of that paperwork, and I've asked the supervisor's office if they received any of that paperwork, but if not, it would be helpful if you would forward to us.
Yeah, aren't we an involved agency?
We are not involved, we are involved, but we are not the lead agency.
No, I understand that, yeah. Yeah, so therefore, we should have a copy.
It's definitely a coordinated review.
Yeah, just to touch upon that, we're actually working with SHPO to finalize the MOA agreement, and also DEC as well. So one of the comments was about the additional permits, any outstanding permits from other agencies, and we're still working to obtain those documents at this time. There's some changes going through the process here on the project for the MOA, so we're finalizing those as well.
Well, I just wanted to bring up, we have a correspondence, and you have two, and you've been discussing the important matters. They brought up, they are a committee, the Open Space Committee, with regard to the Dean's Bridge Road bridge. And I just want to stop for a minute. There has always been a bridge there for more than 239 years, Rochambeau. That was the only north-south road from Danbury to Peekskill. And Rochambeau went across whatever they used to get across, the Croton River there, and it was at that spot. And marched along with his 7,000 troops along Dean's Bridge. Enough of history, but it is significant. There no longer will be a bridge there. We accept that. And the Open Space Committee was hoping that the western abutment, meaning the Somerside, could be used as a birding observational platform with a railing and seating areas. I throw that in, I don't mean it, I think it's a nice idea, and I know you have a copy of their request.
Yes, we do. Yeah, so, would you like to make a comment?
I have a second comment.
Sure.
I'm a lifelong, since it was required of me after I turned 12, I had to have a fishing permit to fish. I still have one, and I often wondered, fishing off the bridge, I needed it, but I could drive across the bridge without it. What that would mean, if we ended up being able to use that as a birding spot, you would need the fishing permit, wouldn't you?
I tell you the truth, I don't know, I don't know that you would need a fishing permit just to observe birds. I don't know the answer to that. I would, I would hope not.
I don't think you need a fishing permit to observe. I think you need a fishing permit to fish.
Well, you probably never ran into the guy that keeps everybody on the straight and narrow, but I have, I'll tell you. I'll tell you. So I didn't.
My, mine was only opinion, not official.
So what, I mean, and at DEP, the division that's responsible for this could probably clarify, but I would imagine you might need a recreational permit, which, in order to park in that vicinity and utilize anything.
I know I need a parking permit to fish.
Yeah, so that's, that is something that, maybe not necessarily a fishing license, but I think a rec permit might be required in order for whatever facilities, boating, anything like that that's there already, or anything that you choose to add later on would probably require that.
I can have an answer for that. I'll inquire about that.
I think you're correct with that.
But just.
Well, tell the guy that stopped me. Okay, I think that's it.
And also, there was one from the Energy and Environment Committee.
Ah, yes, there is, which I don't have in my hand. Do you have it?
Yeah, I have the Energy Environment Committee. Their sentiments resonate very similar to the Open Space Committee. They see the value in this area now that the bridge is going to be removed and potentially not replaced. I believe Dean's Bridge is no consideration at all, that the abutments be used for some sort of recreational purpose, whether it be just a park, just a place to sit and watch, you know, spend some time there, or fish off of, anything like that. If the abutments are in place, put some benches there, I think that's where they're looking to do. We'd hate to lose this, you know, potential space as being of value to some of our residents, considering that we're not going to rebuild anything there.
That second letter, do we have that second? We have both, okay, good.
Basically, it's a carbon copy.
Okay. If I could, could I just make a comment? So, I mean, these are, totally understand these ideas and the value of the historic bridge and having the recognition, having some purpose come back. Just mentioning that what happens is, and this project's taken so many years, what's a little bit more time? I'm not saying, you know, we're trying to make any excuses, but where we had the bridge being taken down, there's one levels of review. If we build a feature, and we build things out, it will delay the project somewhat. I don't want to, and I'm not trying to say because of that, we can't do this, but this is going to add some time, because we have to go back to our, we have to develop more plans, we have to develop, you know, how, it becomes much of an architecture aesthetic view that gets reviewed by our public design commission. It just really could delay the project.
Don't, why, isn't it also going to cause a problem with your legal department with regard to liability?
Absolutely. Thank you for mentioning that. Things like risk, liabilities will all be discussions that'll have to take place, and will take some time. Will it take six months? Will it take a year before everything's vetted out? I'm just mentioning that so the board's aware of that. But, you know, signage and different things, plaques that are much, you know, maybe easier to get through rather than a, you know, vista for bird watching that's got seating, you know, there's a difference in effort that might, and I'd say one thing, I know this meeting's happening with Supervisor Morrissey next week. I think that's part of the topics that maybe they'll broach with Supervisor Morrissey.
Yeah, he's former chairman of that committee.
Okay, great.
Sure.
So I'll just remind the board, I believe that.
By the way, you can watch birds without doing anything to the embankment.
At least as it relates to Plum Brook that's being replaced, I know it's a two-step process, right? We're going to do a removal process and then a replacement process. And if the board was, you know, concerned about the delay, we could always have the, a two-step process here as well, as it relates to the recreational activities if the board wanted to proceed in that direction.
Because it's really the finished product where those types of things matter most anyway.
Right, not necessarily during, I mean, we do understand that the demolition phase obviously would have to happen first. We're just, just sort of, you know, speaking on behalf of our committees, who see value in not wasting this space, right? And so the understanding is there, that this isn't going to be, hey, we'll tear it down and we'll just throw some benches up there. But maybe during the design and build phase for the Plum Brook Bridge, we can discuss it at that point, or even an intermediary point between those two, right? So we're just throwing it out there that our town residents have expressed some interest that this could be a possibility, and if we can work amicably towards some sort of goal or solution, I think that would be ideal for everyone.
And I think we can handle them separately or together, right? We separately could be, since this one is not being replaced and the Plum Brook is, right, we could, you know, have a, within 180 days, they shall submit an application, right, that shows what they're going to do on the recreational improvement, we could do something like that. But maybe what I might recommend is, maybe you can go back and talk to your side about, are we talking about a month delay, or, you know, could it be longer? If it could be longer, right, I think that may be something we want to talk about in January, and then say, all right, how, which approach do we want to take? Do we want to wait, whatever the time period is? Would we prefer to have them move with the demolition, and we do an intermediate process with some kind of a 180-day limit? Or we can also say at the time when they apply for the reconstruction, I think we'll have those options, but maybe check on what that timeline is.
Yeah, we can come back with more specifics next month, for sure.
Joe, I don't think they have month delays.
No, I.
No, no, they don't.
I've worked with the DEP, I know, I don't think you have to be a month. Truer words have never been spoken.
Yes, so my question, my question is, is that we're going to take down these bridges, and as seemed to be implied, that they're going to be replaced, but that could be another 14 years?
Well, we haven't gotten to that bridge yet.
Right, Plum certainly, Dean's.
Plum Brook is the one that's to be replaced.
Absolutely.
And we haven't discussed it yet.
Yeah, but what I wanted to suggest was that, that we, that, maybe you're talking about that in a two-stage process of taking down the bridges and, and the Plum Brook's going to be rebuilt, but it may be 14 years.
No.
Or maybe 10 years.
No.
Maybe, whatever. It's going to be more than a year, okay? Well, my question is, would, would it be worthwhile to put forward the idea that we do this kind of reconstruction of the site, you know, prior to, to, to any of that? And I think that's what you were saying, Joe?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I agree. I think that's a good idea. That, I wouldn't tie, I wouldn't tie these developments with the building of the Plum Brook Bridge.
Well, I wasn't personally tying the bird watching to the Plum Brook Bridge. I was only talking about the Dean's Bridge.
Just for point of clarification, I thought that the materials submitted and the discussion which took place at the prior meeting contemplated reuse of granite portions of the bridge elsewhere, and is the suggestion of use of the abutment in any way in conflict, which would seem to be sort of a prior agreement, that it would be wise to repurpose that granite? And that's one concern that I have.
My understanding was the granite was going to be put back on the abutment in the same place, right? Or did I misunderstand the presentation that you gave?
If you're talking about Plum Brook Bridge, yes, the granite will be reutilized under separate contracts, so that will be cleaned, stored, you know, on-site, if you will, for the duration of the design, and then ultimately, the granite will be incorporated back into the Plum Brook new bridge to meet the current historic, you know, recommendations by our commission, SHPO, et cetera, as well as the town. So yes, but on Dean's, that would not be the case, because there's no bridge going back in that case.
All right, so that material will be available, okay.
Okay, can we address the Plum Brook?
My comments are essentially duplicated between the two.
Oh, okay, fine, fine.
Other than the wetland piece of it.
All right, so then, then we want to set the public hearing for February 12th, for both bridges. Is that right? I know I have the right date for February, but.
We are treating each as one demolition, one project presented for Dean's Bridge and Plum Brook demolition. One plan.
There's actually two separate SECA documents that I've received, so.
Right, so it would be two public hearings.
You'll have to, actually, we'll have to advertise it as two public hearings, and when you vote, it will be two separate votes.
Okay.
Nancy, in terms of the site walk, when were you thinking of doing the site walk?
Well, we do that next.
Until?
It gives us more time to do the site walks. Now, there is a site walk on the 18th, we don't know what time, although they were very gracious and said they could meet our requirements. So we would need to set a date for Dean's Bridge, and we'll have to set a date for Plum Brook. And we have all of January and the beginning of February. I don't have a calendar in front of me, but.
So I'm going to try and tackle it this weekend. I don't know what our schedule is.
Do you want, I mean, I'm available, you can try to do this weekend.
I think this weekend it'll be clear. I think we'll have no snow this weekend, because it's supposed to be warm and rainy tomorrow.
And I don't think it's going, I think next, I don't know, we're getting close to holidays, but I think, I don't think there's any snow in the forecast. It's changed to rain for next Tuesday, so the following weekend, the 20th, I think that's, 21st, I think that's also probably clear.
So what?
I think with, with two board members absent and the instability with the weather, maybe the 21st is better.
Okay.
It gives our absent members some time to.
I was just going to suggest the same date.
Yeah.
About nine o'clock Saturday morning, would that be possible? And which bridge?
What day is it?
Saturday the 21st at 9:00 AM, at which bridge? Dean's Bridge?
Well, you meet at one and travel to the other.
Yeah, well, yeah, why can't you do both at the same time?
Okay, so which, let's start with the Dean's Bridge? 9:00 AM?
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Yeah, can we do that? Okay.
Okay, and then follow up when we're through there over at the Plum Brook. And if weather permits, we'll do that, and if it doesn't, we're going to have to.
We're going to have to cross that bridge when we come through. I was holding on to that now for quite some time. Thank you. Appreciate it.
That's if it's still standing.
That's true.
So then, I'm sorry, the Saturday the 21st at 9:00 AM?
Yes.
We got our target date then?
At Dean's Bridge.
At Dean's Bridge.
On the Somerside.
Yeah, yeah.
Please.
North Salem's a little tough. Actually, just so that to recap, we're going to address the memorandums that we received. We'll submit also the renderings that was asked at the last meeting, so you can actually see the visualization between what's there and what's removed.
Thank you.
We have those prepared as well, so you'll get a copy of those, and then take it from there, next steps.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay.
Did you actually vote on the public hearing?
No.
No, we didn't vote, thank you. We need to take a vote on the public hearing.
Do you need to say something?
Yeah, one more point of information, I think it would be fair for the board. We also received a letter from the Town of North Salem with regard to Dean's Bridge. Do you want to just explain what the letter said, just so you have the information?
Yeah, so basically, they also requested something to be utilized with the granite stones to signify the historic significance of this location. So basically, what our vision is right now, just so the folks know what's going on, we're proposing one large pylon on each side of the structure, one on the Town of North Salem side, one on the Town of Somerside, and then also a bronze plaque signifying, it has yet to be developed, what the nomenclature on that plaque would be, to signify the crossing there. As far as, and then also, we've adjusted, or in the process of adjusting our landscaping plans currently, so those would still be visual after the growth takes place for, you know, both towns, so you'd actually be able to see and utilize that crossing. So that's a development as of yesterday, just to give you. So, that's development as of yesterday, just to give you a heads up what's going on. And if you do actually talk to the town supervisor, that's also part of that discussion Paul just mentioned that will be taking place, right? The stones are very large, they're anywhere from 15 to 17 tons each, so we're going to have some, you know, some kind of subbase or some material under it to stabilize it. So, we'll have, you know, some of those details worked out.
Yes, I failed to mention. I mentioned his name, but not...
They're very large stones.
It's amazing to think about a stone that size being set with horses and human beings, right?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Okay, I think we're set. We need to vote. Would somebody make a motion that we set the public hearing? I mean, that we set the sidewalk? I mean, for the public hearing.
I make a motion we set a public hearing for February 12th, 2020, for the permit application for the removal of Deans Bridge P. I also make a motion that we set a public hearing for February 12th for the permit application for the removal of Plum Brook Bridge M, those being two separate actions.
So moved on both motions.
I'll second that.
Take a vote.
Going in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, boy.
Who does those plaques? Is that the New York, is that New York Historical Society does the plaques? They're like those historic, like Washington's left ear kind of plaques?
Like the bronze plaque?
Yeah, well, it's not bronze, the ones that are on the highway, the cast iron.
The blue, right, with the yellow boring?
Well, you would talk about different ones.
Okay, this is item two, that's on the agenda as the new private school in Somers, which has a name, Bluestone Peak Academy.
Oh, what's it called? Bluestone?
Bluestone Peak Academy.
Is that official there?
It's, we can consider it official, I think.
I was expecting like Microsoft Center or something. You guys are so secretive about the name.
It's a state process, you know, to get the name certified, so.
This is an application for site plan approval, stormwater management, and erosion and sediment control, wetland and water course protection, steep slopes protection, and tree preservation, and preliminary subdivision approval for the adaptive reuse of the former IBM property. The property is located at 294 Route 100, on the Easterly side of Route 100, and is in an OB-100 zoning district.
Good evening, everyone. Peter Wise, Del Bello, Donnellan, Weingarten, Wise, and Whitaker on behalf of the applicant. So, when we were here last month, about a month or so ago, Rich Williams, who's sitting right here to my left, presented the site plan to you. Since then, we've continued to work with Serret and with Joe's office, and for that matter, with Joe's office, to try and bring the town board's lead agency secret process to conclusion. And if I remember the date correctly, I think on November 23rd, we had a site visit. And for those of you who attended, I hope it was worthwhile, certainly for me. Every time I walk through the building, it gives me a better ability to visualize what it is that's proposed here. Tonight, we're kind of here at your disposal. As I said, Rich Williams is sitting right here, Bonnie Von Olson is here, Eric Keier is here. We can present the site plan to you again if you'd like, or we can just address any specific issues that you may want us to try and...
Okay, I'm going to turn over, if you're ready for it, to Serret to explain technically where we're at. We're here to review the site plan and move ahead with the subdivision, but we're not here to take any action.
Correct.
We can't.
Correct.
Because the town board has yet to amend the code.
That's correct.
And I'm going to let Serret introduce the situation.
Okay, basically, Peter certainly could tell you, but there are a couple of things going on. Remember, there's sort of split screen here. Town Board is looking at the petition to change the zoning, and the planning board is looking at the site plan and the subdivision application. And as part of the application for changing the zoning, the town board is also lead agency under SECRE. Those are the books that you've received, the revised books you've received. I've spoken to Bonnie Von Olson actually this afternoon. They are ready to send some further revised pages to both me and Joe's office. As we've gone through, at the staff level, we have been commenting and revising those things. Once we get those revisions and deem that they are complete, we will suggest back to the applicant that they are. They will then produce what could potentially be the final environmental assessment, that large book, for the town board. And at that point, the town board will be in a position to review the entire document, make its secret determination, presumably be able to issue a negative declaration. And at that time, with any further amendments, there are some further amendments being discussed to the earlier petition and the zoning to accommodate some fine points in the zoning. Peter and I have discussed some of those. I have some drafts that still need to be discussed with the supervisor and with Roland. But once that's all in place, then the board can take SECRE action and then approve potentially the petition and the zone changes. Once that happens, the board will be in a position to act. But during that period, Joe's office, myself, Michael Lante, will be reviewing the site plan and the subdivision. And those memos that you received for this meeting are our first look at the site plan and the subdivision applications themselves. That's where we are.
Right.
I mean, so what you may want is just me and Joe to give you a quick overview of what our comments were?
Yes, I don't know, should we do Joe's first or yours first? Because yours, I mean, as I understand it, the floor area and the percentage...
I'm not going to get into those specifics. Don't worry about it.
Okay, well, that's true me, okay.
All I'm going to say is that there are some modifications to their zoning bulk table that have to be made, and those may need to be made further once we really nail down what the modifications in the zoning are. One of the things that I think is important to note is that on the site plan, which I had not been aware of before, is that they've shown, and I think it's a good thing, they've shown a potential walking path from the school into the hamlet. And one of the questions, maybe we need to talk about this, is it goes through lot four, which was not part of SECRE, and how we're going to work with that?
I would submit to you that a walking trail isn't really very significant when it comes to environmental impacts, but we'll figure out how to deal with it.
Right.
Yeah, figure out how to do it.
Because there was supposed to be nothing on those other two lots, but now that we've raised it, we have to figure out a way to deal with it, because I think it's a good thing that there be that connection. And because it comes down across from Bailey Park, and we now have sidewalks on the other side of the street.
Why can't, excuse me, why can't the owner have a walk? It's all right.
All right, but should this trail be established, students could get to the hamlet, and they could have a safe passageway at that signalized intersection. And now there are sidewalks along Route 100 in both directions, and that take you into the Somers Town Shopping Center, as well as, you know, through there to De Chico's. So, you know, that would be a good thing to be able to accomplish as part of the site plan. Other than that, you know, there's a lot of details that I have here, which, you know, will work out as we go through this process. Any of the things that the board notes that it has particular interest in or concerns about, you know, we'll discuss here.
Okay, well, could we start out with the traffic report? Do we have somebody from Frederick P. Clark here, or since I have a...
We could at another meeting if you want. That, remember, they're not here tonight.
Oh, okay, then.
They have basically indicated that they are satisfied with all of the analysis that's been provided by the applicant's traffic engineer. Remember, that is part of the SECRE process, so that has gone, will go to the town board, but it will go to you once we finalize this EAF. So, you will see it, and at that point that you get it, you can make comments on it.
Okay, well, I'll put that aside. Well, could we start with Joe and his report on the subdivision, et cetera?
Sure. So, we've issued some comments, a couple pages, it looks more daunting than it is. We've seen a real nice job on the stormwater, I'll start with that. An acceptable plan has been submitted. There's a couple of comments on that, nothing that I think is any challenge. The applicant's proposing to address stormwater quality using rain gardens. So, we have a few, rain gardens and infiltration systems, and we have a number, a couple comments around those. We've asked for some, you know, any existing pipes for them to do calculation on, and provide pipe calculations for our review, as well as, you know, camera some of the sewer lines that we're planning on using to make sure that they're still, you know, we can still use those lines. We've asked for some additional details on the erosion and sediment controls. Getting to page six, item seven, I think, you know, this is an item that Jennifer may have updated you on, but just in case she hasn't, you know, I'm always concerned about colloidal soils when we're dealing with excavations, especially on top of a hill, especially when there's sensitive environments down below. So, we've asked the applicant to do a series of soil testing so that we understood what kind of soils that we're dealing with. We have identified some soils with some quite high silt contents. So, item seven is really about coming up with a management plan around those, you know, I mean, I, so I've asked her some details on those. I think that's one of the, you know, it's also a SECRE item, but it'll also be connected to any land disturbance, to make sure that as we're disturbing land, we don't have, for example, digging colloidal soils out from depth and placing them across the surface, and then it rains the next day, because that's, we'll just run right through silt fences like coffee, right? And, you know, so, and Rich and I have talked about this, we're on the same page, I want to, but I want the board to be aware that those soils that we're concerned about do exist, and we're going to be coming up with a detailed management plan around that.
These soils, are they involved in the, why are they a concern?
Because they run through silt fence, because they become, if, you know, if particle becomes, I don't know if you remember, you've been around, so you probably do remember, you lived in town for a long time.
That's why I'm asking.
When the construction, if you recall, when the construction of Anglebrook Golf Course, I mean, there were plenty of colloidal soils there, and when it rained, I believe the aerial photos showed coffee-like stormwater, I mean, conveyance all the way to reservoirs, right? That's the situation we're trying to avoid. I've seen this happen before, and...
Didn't IBM get a huge fine?
IBM, actually, some soils exist on the Somers Crossing project that had run down, but those are actually large enough to settle. We were talking about soil, you know, particles that are so fine, that if, you know, if they were in a jar and the jar looked like coffee, it might take six months for that soil to settle. We're talking about very, very fine particles that would run right through a silt fence. You know, just the silt fence, hay bales are not going to remove that material. That's what we're talking about, and making sure that we have a management process so that those soils never become exposed and subject to erosion. And I'm confident that Rich will come up with a good plan on that. I also had a comment about the, about the walking trail, so we both picked up on that. We're looking for construction sequence.
Could I ask a question about, how long is that? Does anybody have a measurement on how long that walking trail is?
I don't think we've seen any details on it. We've asked for details on the plan. What does it look like on the trail? What does it look like? What cross section? Is it pervious? Is it impervious? Where's it going to and from, that kind of stuff?
Yeah, but one of the things I'm interested in is how long it is, whether...
Maybe Rich can answer that.
It's certainly going to be over 1,000 feet, just to point out how it's going to connect. Looking at the plan we brought with us, you have Route 100, the Loop Road sits right here, Muscuit Reservoir, the hamlet's down in this area, you can see the Somers Town Center. Right here is our frontage next to Bailey Court. Bailey Court's right in here. We're going to run a walking trail that basically comes up the slope and connects into the Loop Road here. It happens to be the most direct route to the hamlet, and we're going to design it as basically a walking trail, not impervious surfaces. It's not going to be concrete, it's not going to be asphalt, it's really just going to be...
What is the elevation difference between the bottom and the top?
I'll have to look that up off the top of my head, I don't know. Couple hundred feet.
It's not, it's not flat.
It's not.
I know, that's why I asked.
It'll be a good sleigh riding.
It's a little hike, it's a little bit of a hike, yeah.
Yes, yes. Well, the gardens are at what elevation? 492? The gardens that you reference here?
I don't remember exactly.
The elevations, just under 500 feet.
Yeah. I think there's a couple hundred feet of elevation change we're going to look at here. Which would make a great sleigh riding trail for the kids.
They're going to be in good shape.
Yeah.
It also, it also may entail things like steps instead of just a slope.
Well, it depends. It sounds like it's not going to be a sidewalk. It sounds like it's going to be a gravel path of sort.
Maybe like with, like cinder, like just cinders and...
Well, I think, my... Stone dust, you know, stone dust or a wood chip. You know, the school's going to have provisions to get students into the hamlet via shuttles. This is just, we feel it's important to have an auxiliary route, just it's more direct than walking all the way down our entrance drive, which leads you to Route 100 by the Burger Barn, where there are no sidewalks. So, this gets you to a sidewalk connection, which we feel is important.
So, Richard, do you envision that we're going to be able to get it, are we going to, let's put it so, are we going to need a piece of sidewalk to get from wherever your connection point is to the signalized intersection on Route 100? Or do you envision that you're going to be able to get to the location that is easily crossable by the light?
So, our property is right next to Bailey Court, so there is an opportunity for you to walk onto, you know, the Bailey Court driveway and then cross over to the, to the intersection. So, right now, we're not proposing any sidewalk?
So, that might be something that we need to look at, right, at some point, is, I don't know that we can have your sidewalk, you know, your walkway end on somebody else's property, right?
No, there's a fair amount of right of way there, but we can take a closer look.
Right, maybe that's something to take a look at, just for your, just for the pedestrian safety.
I mean, they also have to put their snow somewhere when they plow, and if they're going to plow, if they're in the habit now of plowing up to where you will happen to put your path, it's certainly, definitely opportunity for conversation.
So, and that's really, there were also, the other part of our memo is, let's see, just if we keep going through it, location, you know, shall update the plan to depict the locations of any existing proposed utilities, specifically service connections to the fieldhouse. The applicant should, due to CCTV, I mentioned, make sure that the lines we're planning on using are in good condition and not full of roots. The applicant, just some more details on the elevations of the wall, furnished approvals from outside agencies. Let's take a, you know, look at the disturbance of steep slopes towards some of the comments about coming down that hill. We'll have to take a look at that in addition to it. You know, there's some plantings inside the 100-foot buffer, you know, it is disturbance. I'm sure, let's just make sure that we're doing it in a way that we don't need to do mitigation.
We can, yeah.
Right, that's, I think, is the main comment. If we're going to disturb all kinds of stuff to go in, it's one thing, but I think we can probably do it in a way that minimizes the disturbance, understand what that looks like. The provided drawings indicate field lighting for the baseball fields. Shall update the plan to include some of the details around that, and I know that's also an important SECRE item that is still running in parallel here. And then, we just identified a couple of inconsistencies between the application forms and the submittal that I'm sure you'll clean up. So, that was the extent of the comments that we had. We really had no comments on the subdivision itself at this time. We really focused on the site plan.
Well, as far as the subdivision goes...
Right, it's really, the site plan is really the most important thing. The subdivision is essentially just creating, parcelizing the property itself.
Yeah, well, I have a question. Yeah, well, I have a question regarding that.
So, we should, it's appropriate to be talking of those, I spent my, our time looking at the detail of the site plan, because I know that that's the critical path, but it's totally appropriate that if you had some thoughts on the subdivision, that now's a good time to share them.
Yeah, I, I think John Curry brought up this point with Roland regarding the, the application for the change to where it was going to prohibit a certain type of use that's now allowed in the, in the present zoning. And my, my question is, and I, I asked Charette about this, and she was, I don't know if she had a chance to look into it, but she was going to look into the idea of whether...
Yeah, we have an answer from Roland.
Roland answered that out.
He answered it.
No, no, I saw that answer, I'm concerned about that answer. The answer that it stays with the, it stays with the property.
Correct.
Right, well, I'm, that's what I'm concerned about. My question is that why, if they're only developing two of the parcels, does the, why, why does that zoning change not just stay with those two parcels, and the other two parcels, which are not being developed, remain as the existing zoning? That's my point.
Well, in essence, Mr. Prince, they would, because they remain OB-100, we're not proposing to change that, and we're making this new school use a special exception use. And so, the permit, the special exception use permit is only going to apply to those two lots, the lot in which the school's located and the lot in which the wastewater treatment facility is located. So, the other two lots, for all intents and purposes, just stay OB-100 like they are today.
Like they were.
There's really no change.
Okay, okay, because the, I just, I know you're getting special application for the school, but in that special application is, is, is also included, if I'm not mistaken, the idea that you're, you're eliminating the possibility of multiple...
Oh, well, yeah, and that was actually in collaboration with the town, so again, it's not, doesn't really matter to us, what we're trying to do here is make sure that, that at no time in the future can the remainder of the property be used for multifamily residences. That's the, the broad objective that the town asks us to look at, and we're perfectly okay with that.
Which part of the town asks you to look at that?
Excuse me?
Which part of the town asks you to look at that?
The town board.
Town board.
The town board.
Yeah, it was the town board's decision.
Yeah.
They were the ones concerned.
Yeah. And, and we don't have a problem with the elimination of that possibility, that future possibility, it's okay, well, you know, it's acceptable to us.
I'm not, well, okay, my personal feeling is that I'm not crazy about that decision by the town board, but I, obviously, not lead agency, so I can only express my...
So, you, you would rather see the, the zoning remain unchanged, and if that would include multifamily, then so be it, that's, okay.
Yeah, I, I, you know, uh...
By the way, as, as part of the review process, I mean, that, that's a relevant comment.
Of course.
That you can and should make.
You're expressing your group.
Yeah.
And they want to hear from us.
Yeah, well, I mean...
In other words, they have not made a decision yet.
Right, you know, so...
I mean, if they want to do it for the two sites, the two parts...
And we, of course, and we, of course, are neutral, one way or the other, it's, we don't, doesn't matter to us.
Okay.
Hang on, because I, I'm confused now, I'm sorry. So, the genesis for the question was to make sure that if the school was no longer a school at the site, that Sebastian Capital couldn't now develop in the new zoning that we approved for the school. And my understanding from Roland was that that can't happen, because if the school's project and special use permits, they would be terminated based on that not being in business anymore, and that any new development or any plan or project would have to come in front of us and require approval, require zoning changes if need be for the zoning board.
Yes.
So, am I, am I understanding that Roland's answer correctly?
Yes, but there's another piece that Bruce is, Bruce has been...
Yeah, and maybe that's where I'm not in sync with.
Has been asking me about several times, that other people have been concerned about, and that has to do with the fact currently, the OB-100, even though it's an office business district, has a reference back to uses that are permitted in the R-80 zone.
Right.
And there are uses that are permitted in the R-80 zone, even though, I don't want to get into this part about the multifamily, but everybody considered that a multifamily use would have been one of those uses permitted. The town board wanted to make sure, from its own point of view, as lead agency, obviously the planning board can discuss this and make some comments back to the town board. First, we have Parcels One and Two, which are the school, those will get a special permit for the private school being created.
Right.
That's what Roland's comment addressed.
Got, okay, these are two separate, but similar questions.
The other two lots would still remain OB-100, but with some modified zoning, and part of that modified zoning is to make clear that no multifamily use is permitted on those parcels, however they get developed in the future. That was the one issue that the town board did not want. Single-family homes would be permitted, but multifamily, i.e. townhouses, would not be permitted.
And I have a problem, I have a problem with that.
And you think we should allow townhouses?
Yeah, we want to know what the real thing is.
Tell me.
They don't want to have condominiums anymore, because condominiums have a very low tax, they pay very low taxes.
That's correct.
And that's really what it's all about. And fee simple, okay.
Fair enough, I mean, you know, we've got a manager town, so...
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not...
They just don't want another heritage hill, they don't want condominiums.
There's a certain philosophy going on here, that obviously...
And that's really what it's all about.
Points well taken.
Yeah, I mean, the town, the town board may be interested in three and four and five-acre individual parcels of land. I, my own personal opinion is that I think the future of a lot of this land should not go to three and four-acre parcels of land for individual homes. Now, that may be my sort of own, you know, opinion, I don't want to put a name on it, but, yeah, and...
Well, at some point, the town board is going to ask the planning board for input in the secret process.
Not at some point, now.
Right.
Now, so you all should discuss this right now.
Okay, I'm going to jump in.
And make a recommendation one way or the other, you've already had two joint meetings...
I'm going to jump in, they're allowing the R-80, it is R-80. They're just not allowing what they call multifamily housing. What they want to avoid are condominiums. You still have the same number of dwelling units, they just don't want them all squished together in a cluster attached called condominiums, which then get taxed at just a fraction of what an R-80 would normally get taxed at. An R-80 house is a million-dollar house. If you turn it into a condominium, it's not a million-dollar house anymore, even if you sell it for a million dollars as a condominium, they only get a fraction of the taxes. So, I, what I don't understand is, so say, don't, don't allow condominiums and just have fee simple, and you get the...
Joe, that's...
That's harder to do in zoning.
Oh, okay, I'm not a lawyer.
It's a little harder to do.
I'm not a lawyer, but...
There are some legal prohibitions to the ability to outright prohibit that, which is why sort of the consensual discussion as part of another approval process is acceptable. But I think what I hear, and I don't think you should talk around it, Mr. Prince or any of the other board members, there is a valid principle involved in, and you are the planning board, in how the town has developed, and the tax revenues are very relevant discussion, very relevant. As you said, we have to manage the town, those things make a difference, right? Who can live here and how they manage to do it is another thing that is a reasonable inquiry, inquiry in a process like this. So, you should not dance around it, like any one of you individually, or the board when it makes its recommendation. It is a planning concept.
Yes.
And, and it's right in your wheelhouse for what you should be talking about with the board.
I wish they would flush it out and talk about it, instead of hitting us with...
There'll be no multifamily housing.
Yeah, this is, this is the time, you, let me remind you, you've had two joint meetings with the town board on these secret issues, and the zoning was part of it. So, now you're becoming clearer on what the zoning is, so you are still part of that process. Once we get that final look from Bonnie's office, you know, we'll see what the final product of the zoning is, but if you have concerns now, you should discuss it, decide how you want to give some feedback to the town board, if any, and I will process that for you, but you should do that tonight.
Yeah, I, what, the project that's coming up after this, which is...
Cobbling Rock.
Cobbling Rock resulted, I, I, I yield to the historian here, that back in, what, 1990s, was it upzoned?
Uh, something like that, I've forgotten exactly.
That the town, that the town...
Upzoned, three-acre zoning, for open space.
The town fathers at that time, whoever they were, you know, upzoned that area so that there would be these minimal large lots, and that, I, you know, may have been fine in 1990s, I don't think it was, but my problem is that I don't, I don't think that we should be negating the possibility of other types of housing being available for the, a community, you know, that, that's basically it. You know, you can call it whatever you want, but I just don't think that, that we should be building two and three-million-dollar homes, and a million-dollar home, forget about that, there's no million-dollar homes anymore. These homes in Cobbling Hill are going to be a lot more, I assume, more than a million dollars. What, right?
They're hoping, they're hoping.
They're going to be more than a million dollars.
Is that, you know, Bruce has put something on the table, I think it's appropriate for the board to say, is this a board, does the board agree with that position or not? Is that, I think, what, what...
I mean, I think that clustered condominiums are, are not the way to go in a, in a space like this. I think that there is more value for a homeowner, there's more value for the town, there's more value for a neighbor, if we have individual homes on larger zoned plots like an R-80 or a R-120, which would allow for, again, my choice in how I want my house built and the amenities that I have in it, we're condominiums now, it's, we have a lot going up in this town. We've got all these projects that are coming up with these homes, Heritage, which is, which is a huge, was a huge undertaking, and is very populous, you know, we're, you know, Somers, we're at 25,000 residents now. I just think that we have to be careful with allowing a project like this, a, and I'll call it a loophole, and I say that with the utmost of respect, to be able to say, hey, you know what, well, now, this, this project failed for the school, and now, let's just do what we initially intended, because if I remember correctly, the, the property owner here did try something similar with residents, and when he first purchased the property, and that was something that was shot down pretty quickly with a lot of public contention, and I think that we need to stick to that, if that's the route that we're going to take. School is great, but it's, it's, it's transient residence, right? And so, we're going to have, it's a place of business, a place of education, there'll be some residences there, but nothing permanent. Where now, if the, if the school does happen to fail, and I hope it does not, but if it does, then what is the landowner going to do with this property now? And if we, if we pave the way for them to circumvent, well, maybe circumvent's not the right word, but maybe go back to the original concept of developing this, this property into, you know, and it's a significant piece of property, and it's a sole landowner, and that makes me nervous too. So, you know, that's just something that we, as a, as a town, and as a planning board, and in conjunction with zoning, which is why we have zoning rules and laws, and the, the lead agency here, the town board, to really just make sure, and this really doesn't have much to do with the school itself, but it has to do with what could potentially happen in the future, should this not work.
I would just add, keep in mind, the, the school could be quite successful, we're talking about the lots that are not where the school is, right?
Right, right.
Right, and, and whether we're going to restrict the zoning, right, right now, the proposal is to restrict the zoning and to have a consensual agreement, using the legal term, of some limitation on the development opportunities for those other two lots.
For the all four parcels.
Right, so, so Bruce is saying, I don't like that, just leave it the way that it is, and I think, it seems like you're maybe on the other side of that, says, well, no, I like the wisdom behind not having it, and we have three other board members here.
Yeah, but you're, you're talking about circumventing, you're not circumventing. The existence of the zoning is as it is today. What we're doing with regard to changing it, that...
You're taking away...
You're, you're circumventing, you're circumventing something that's part of the zoning document today.
Right.
And that's what I find, I find...
Troubling.
Troubling. I mean, you know, I mean, you know, there, there is a slight little development of 66 houses going on here in Bonnie Yello's property, how did that ever get built, okay? Why wasn't that single-family homes? That was way before my particular existence on, in this, in this area.
Well, I had a similar zone change.
Everybody wanted it, the argument was they didn't want condominiums because they got less tax money, that was the issue, the only issue. They wanted, they did not want the condominium.
Well, that's...
They wanted fee simple. The, the housing was fine, the way it was situated, fine. And that's why they came in here and got rid of multifamily housing, they didn't want any more condominiums. It's just strictly the tax.
I, 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 I don't agree with that.
I'm not supporting it or opposing it, I'm just, and it was never openly said, and I'm throwing it out.
Right.
Jane, you're on the board a while, what's, what's your thought on this?
My thoughts are, they come in, they're going to pay their taxes, and that's what the town needs, is the taxes. And as that development of 84 homes, whatever it is, people are moving in, they're going to be paying taxes, they're going to be shopping, they're going to be doing all those things. Don't kill development, if it's right.
If it's right, then, and that's, that's, that is the key statement here, right? If it's right, is it right, is it a right fit in the right place?
Yeah, we're not changing, the number of houses that can be built there, by the way, you realize that, we're not changing. It's R-80, it hasn't, hasn't changed.
So, the lot count will be dependent upon R-80, and then, yes, and the next question is, can they cluster?
We haven't changed it, we just, there aren't going to be condominiums, that's the code word, and by saying multifamily housing...
Attached, when you say attached.
Right.
As the Rosen...
Well, fee simple can be attached.
I was, I was, well, you know, we've, we've spoken, what is the rest of people doing?
I have a, a technical question, not having read the OB-100 description recently, not realizing this is what would be the issue of the moment, is that, on a technical matter, how is it that it circles, what is the reason that it circles back into, to allowing the multifamily? And it sounded like it was something that you didn't want to get into the weeds on, but what is it that's happening in the OB-100 that is then inclusive of the multifamily option?
When you read the OB-100, principal permitted uses, there's a list, starts off with single-family and farm crops, et cetera, believe it or not, and then it goes down to public uses and religious uses and some other kinds of uses as you go down, and the last use is multifamily. It says multifamily and a multifamily zone, but those are the uses that are permitted, it's a little strange, but those are the uses that...
What is multifamily?
Yeah, and in OB-100, it says, one of the permitted uses is any use permitted in the R-80 district in accordance with the regulations of the R-80 district.
Right.
And it's just, it's a mechanism that a lot of communities have used historically to, to...
Cluster.
To, just, well, to essentially bring the, the uses from one zone into another, whether it makes sense here or not, that's not for me to say.
So, what this zone is doing is it's cutting out everything below number one on the OB-100, that's really all it's doing. It's saying R-80, but only the top use is the principal permitted use, which is single-family homes.
Detached, single-family homes.
Detached, all the other uses are no longer going to be allowed in the OB-100. That's what the zoning basically says.
My, my problem is that I, I foresee that the town board is taking the opportunity of your development to...
They are, to a certain extent, but with our consent, to be fair, to be with our consent.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I'm, I'm sure you, you...
I'm sure you, you couldn't care less. I mean, you know, but the town, the town is taking the, the town board is taking the advantage of your operation to eliminate five or six uses of the, of the, of the zoning.
Yeah, they really felt they lost a lot of money with the 66...
Yeah, well, I mean, that, you know... Then run a bit of town. I mean, what am I supposed to say?
Oh, I know.
Well...
Thank you.
I don't know how you're going to do it, but you'll be representing the position.
So where, where does the board overall stand on this?
Well, what's left of the board, I don't know.
Where do you stand? Or where do you sit?
I, I resent the low taxes paid by condominiums, quite frankly. I resent that. And I, what I resent what the board did is I didn't realize that that's what they were doing. I only paid attention to the, when you said adamantly there'll be no multifamily housing. That's what I reacted to.
Then I went back and I looked at it and I said, I'm not quite sure that's exactly what we were dealing with here.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I would like, I live in this town too. I would like taxes as many, as many dollars as taxes as possible. But I think...
What I hear from you is that you resent the R-80 zone. It's a large zone. That's what you resent. The three acres per house.
Oh, yeah, no, no.
That's what you oppose.
Well, I, 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 no, I don't oppose... I don't oppose that as long as there's an alternative. But the town has now eliminated that alternative in the zone.
You don't get more houses. You still get the same number of houses. But you get less taxes because they're allowed to be attached.
But you also get, you know, this is going to come out. You're also going to get a different population, is what is...
That's what you're trying to say.
That's what...
That's what you should say.
Yeah. Yeah, we're getting, we're getting a different population. Okay? You're going to get, you know, there's a different population that's going to be in, in...
It's not low cost housing.
I didn't, I, I don't know. I have nothing against the different population.
Population aside, the, the way, again, and just to, just, the way I see it is, is that I've got a resident in the town that's, has full access to all town services, right? Because they live in the town and they're living in a condominium. And they're paying a quarter of what I'm paying for the equal amount of services that my town is responsible to give me. Right? Emergency services, or the town government, all of that stuff. And here we have an opportunity to try to keep that as equitable and fair as possible. So that for, for, for my land and my, my home and the services that I get from Somers is the same as yours or similar and close. And this, this to me is, it is taxing to a town from a public safety standpoint, from, from a municipal management standpoint, where we have a reduced tax base for the same amount of population in the same space. And, and that's really concerning. I mean, listen, I, for all of the projects that I've tried to present to the town that required funding, it was always an issue. Funding is an issue. Funding is an issue. And here, we're, we're going to, we're going to cut our nose off and say, well, you know what? Let's let them, let's let developers put condominiums in here because it's the right thing to do because of the way that the, the, the town code is, is, is written. And so now we, we have an opportunity to sort of prevent that from happening.
So, I mean, maybe a suggestion, right? So, Saret described where they talked about the R-80, you know, zone just striking all uses below item one, right? Single family. It sounds like there may be an opportunity here to say, R-80 residential and maybe, and other fee simple, you know, other fee simple, like in just, because if, if the issue is about condo, I don't know, is that possible or no?
Well, that's what I asked the question.
I mean, actually, Joe...
Engineer, stick to engineering.
Frankly, I think what we should do is...
Is the OB-100, 180 or 1, 180 or 120?
R-80.
It's R-80.
R-80.
Two acres, two acres. What I, I'm going to suggest the following. I can write a memo to the town board that this came up for discussion tonight, that there are some members of the planning board who were concerned about eliminating the use of multifamily in the zone, others that were not. The board understands that the town board is the lead agency, but they wanted to make the town aware of the fact that it was an item for discussion for board to consider. I mean, obviously, you know, this is an item for discussion, and I'm going to tell you right now, the town board is the lead agency.
Yes, right.
They're going to decide.
So, they're going to decide.
But Chris, just one final thing, a little, a little history here. This town was sold a, a development called Heritage Hills. 1,100 acres of land. And they were sold, they, they approved that development because they weren't going to have to plow streets.
Correct.
They weren't going to have to do...
I'm not knocking Heritage because you, you take care of your own roads.
We take care of everything on our own. We plow our streets, we pave our streets, we patrol our streets, and...
You weren't going to provide children to the school system.
And originally, they weren't going to have any children. Right now, there's 5,000 residents. And when, when I joined, when I came here 15 years ago, there were like 50 students in the schools. Now there's maybe 300, 350 is the last number that, that I heard. Okay? So the, the, the town got a very good deal. And so even though the taxes on those units are, are, are less, we pay for all the services that you think we're getting for free. And I, I, I don't like that.
I, I totally agree with, with the most of your assessment, except for the children. That's the part of the deal that fell through.
Yeah, well, but, but 5,000, 5,000 residents usually produce a lot more than 400 students.
Well, the number of students is growing.
Yeah, well, it's, yeah, it's growing.
It happens to be the best place to get housing.
As the median age goes down of the, of the residents, right? And, you know, so if it was...
The demographics is going down, that's for sure.
Right. If it was marketed at 55 and over, you're really not going to have too many kids in the school system. But now that they're, that opened the doors for younger families moving in, and that's exactly my point now, and the school taxes, I mean, this, there, there are a lot of moving parts to this. And I don't deny that Heritage Hills does, they do, they are self-sufficient in certain, in certain avenues, but it's not 100%. They are not, they are, because if they were, then they should have their own form of government as well. And they don't.
Well, we, we've been trying for that, but that's...
You know, and so again, without, without going down that wormhole.
Well, you do a good job, actually.
Thank you.
So I, I live in Heritage. I'm a, I'm a beneficiary certainly of the paying a small amount of taxes than a landowner. I also have less control. So I do give something up.
Control, what do you mean?
I have less control over what the, I can plant directly in front of my unit. It's not my yard. It's limited common area.
You own zero land.
I, no, I don't own zero.
Yes, you do.
I have a share of the limited common area. And I pay condo fees based on that percentage of the total acreage that is owned by my condominium. For those who don't live in Heritage Hills and Somers, there's Heritage Hills within there. There are multiple condominiums, each of which is constituted of a particular acreage. Everybody owns, based on the size of their unit, a portion of that acreage. We all pay fees to our condo to support and plow the local road. We pay into the mothership, the society, the larger, to then pay for the rest of that stormwater and, and all of that that goes on, on how else to describe it. So, you know, I'm a beneficiary of it. I also lose control. It's a, there's a double edged sword there. Looking at the, the issue of condos and prices, there's a great range of prices at Heritage. The most recent condo development in town, the Bonnie Yellow property, those are, I would say, well out of my price range. And it's, it's, I understand the town's concern about not having the tax revenue. And I, I think that fee simple is probably preferable.
Fee simple, yeah.
And you can build multifamily, what is, you can build housing that's not multifamily, that's fee simple, that's sensitive to the environment.
Greenbrier.
That is not going to create overmuch stormwater management problems, et cetera, and still be able to get the benefit of the tax revenue. And I think that's part of sustainability. That's part of sustainable development. And if you don't recognize the need to have economically sensible development for those people who live here, I don't think you're really being realistic about what's sustainable. So, like I said, so I get what you're saying. I totally do. So, yeah, I think it's, it's probably very fair to say there's a mix of views on that. But I just feel it, having benefited from it, it's only appropriate for me to say, yes, I benefit from living in a condo. And I recognize that it's important for...
I think...
The tax situation to, because we've built a lot of multifamily housing in different forms within, within the boundaries of the town of Somers.
Right. I think that Saret's recommendation is a good one in that it fairly expresses a point that's been raised by an involved agency with the proper purview to raise it. You're going to let the lead agency know that it's a concern so that they consider it fully and fairly. That's exactly what the process should elicit. I think that's what you should do.
Yeah, the reason for no multifamily housing being part of the amendment, the reason has never been discussed publicly. And the planning board is requesting that it be discussed publicly to the public. And we started...
All right, I, I will, I will draft a memo and I will circulate to the planning board to make sure that I have fairly expressed the variety of opinions prior to sending it to the town board.
Okay.
Thank you, Saret.
I can live with that.
Thank you for your patience while the town works this out.
Now, now Peter Weiss knows the rest of the story.
But it, but it was an interesting discussion, nevertheless.
What are you doing for awhile?
Okay, well, where are we?
If there's any other comments, other questions on the site plan after the sidewalk? Questions for me, questions for Saret?
I really am at a loss at where we are in terms of providing what the town board needs in order to move forward.
Yeah. You will get, probably, once, once I get the revisions and we deem that they are complete, you will get a final version, probably, and I'm thinking about it, probably you and the town board with a group of those changed pages so that you know what has happened. So then you can look at it all. And, you know, if we think a joint meeting is necessary, we can have a joint meeting prior to the town board finalizing its approval of this. You know, I can talk to the supervisor to give you the opportunity to make any comments. Or, depending on the timing, whether or not there's a planning board in between, whether or not we'll discuss it at a planning board meeting and you'll make your comments known to the lead agency. So we'll determine how that is. But that's where that's going to happen. Still, remember, site plan and subdivision is here, not at the town board. And that's what you're going to be continuing to look at.
So, so, let me, let me, let me, I'll use, I think you did a good job explaining it, but I'll use maybe a little less. So right now, Saret just described everything associated with the sequer process, right? Put that over here. Sequer process, town board, lead agency. You're going to get a, a, a fully IAS. There's going to be joint meetings. There's going to be other opportunities to comment, et cetera. Okay? Then we have the site plan over here, which will come to you after this is approved in a formal fashion. This discussion tonight on the site plan is, hey, is there anything you're seeing that will make that easier in the future? Hey, Rich, you know, can we change this? Or I don't like the sidewalk, or whatever it is. But, you know, it's more about providing input on the site plan to make the future process of the site plan review more, more smooth.
Right. And, and to put the applicant's gloss on it, it's to put this board in a position to act on the site plan subdivision and the other permits at the first possible opportunity after the town board acts.
So we're trying to advance the site plan in, on a parallel path to the sequer process.
But not in front of it.
Right, right.
You have to stay behind it.
And not long after the sequer process either.
While the applicant's goal would be to make that as soon as possible.
We have a very aggressive schedule. I mean, there's no, there's no hiding that. So, yes, we'd be looking to be, again, put you in a position to act as soon as possible.
And this is not, I mean, you know, because you, you, I don't think we're here. We've done this, this happens routinely, that we'll review these in parallel. It's not an, any abnormal process.
Understood.
I just lost my note.
So, the question now is, if there are any further comments at tonight on site plan or subdivision, please make them. If not, we'll send everybody on their way.
Okay. I would say we're ready to send you on your way.
Go.
Go. Okay.
Be gone.
Thank you very much. And by the way, happy holidays.
Thank you.
Same to you. I just lost. Okay, Cobbling Rock. Okay, Cobbling Rock.
Argumented it.
I find my Cobbling Rock notes. Just bear with me for a minute. How could I lose?
Oh, thank you. Have you seen the bridge at the end of Muscoot Lane? Are they, ended that? Because they tore that bridge down 340 years ago. And they created like a barrier with two head walls. Would you want to get a perspective on what they're doing?
What kind of recreation?
Well, it's not really recreation for September. It's going to be broken.
All right, mustard?
Yeah, the end of Muscoot Lane, right there. End of Muscoot Lane, right by Billingsley Village. Right? A big wall, a rail, two granite posts. People fish or fish. Give you an idea of what was done in the past.
Thank you.
And who, whose property, whose, whose property is?
And whose property is it? Is it part of an agency? It's Highway Department?
I don't think it's Highway Department.
Probably D P.
I think it's D P, D P property. I think that's going to be D P.
Okay.
Right after Billingsley, make the right, go down. It's Muscuit Lane and it ends, usually be a bridge, but across to walk is down the highway. The New York State Highway.
Right.
Okay, we have Cobbling Rock Estate Subdivision. A discussion of the conventional subdivision and compliance of the nine lot count with requirements. Discussion of readiness for determination of lot count.
All right, so we've done a review. I've issued quite a lengthy memo. The memo is just reviewing the conventional with all the comments that would go with if we were sticking with the conventional subdivision, okay? That being said, I know that we're on the table to contemplate a conservation subdivision. And I am convinced at this point in time that the demonstrations are sufficient to say this is a nine lot subdivision.
You are?
I am, I mean.
I have a question about that. Because the last thing I remember is Lot One.
They moved the basin up.
And what did the highway superintendent say?
He did not want to take care of it down at the bottom and they moved it up to the top. And you can see that on.
He agreed?
Yes, correct. And you can see that right now Lot One has that moved up front. It's not the greatest driveway, but it is a compliant driveway. And, you know, the stormwater works, the lots, you know, are still decent sized lots. I mean, there's still some big lots there, some two acre lots or whatever. But as far as, from a conventional perspective, although, you know, obviously, there's still demonstrations, there's still a lot of comments that we need to address at the detailed stage. For lot count, area requirements. For stormwater, access to properties, overall stormwater management. I'm satisfied that.
Okay, the other question that you raised that you were not satisfied with that were about the septic field and soil testing that you had yet to hear about. For the septic.
The, no, I think it was for the stormwater systems is what we were talking about. So Matt can go through that.
So, evening, everyone. Matthew Geronda from Vibo Associates here on behalf of the applicant. Since the previous appearance in front of the board, we did have the opportunity to revise the conventional plan based on comments from the consultant engineer as well as the town planner. Most notably, the reconfiguration of Lot One to show the alternative stormwater basin access, which was the preferred location for maintenance. And we also completed some further infiltration testing throughout the site to confirm our design assumptions. That testing went well. And we did verify our design infiltration rates that we used in our preliminary SWIP. Exactly what Joe has said, based on discussions we've had with Serret and Joe. I believe we've satisfactorily demonstrated a conventional nine lot subdivision from a zoning standpoint. There obviously are some detailed engineering comments to work out as we progress through the design. But we did perform that additional testing and we did reconfigure Lot One as discussed.
Does anybody have concerns about the lot count? And about the individual lots, spots that we were concerned about?
I don't have any problem with the lot count. I think that the sort of gerrymandering of Lot One is somewhat unreal. I hope you're going to be able to sell that for a million dollars. But anyway, no, I think that driveway.
That's, I've seen worse. Just so you know, I've seen worse.
You've seen worse driveways than that?
Yes, I think we all have.
The lot next door is similar, but that's the point.
Well, yeah.
The concern is the highway superintendent. If he doesn't go with it.
Right, but the basin's up front. I think we're talking about the driveway location. If you see the driveway on Lot One, it's a little circuitous.
That water slide, that's what it looks like.
Yes.
It's a.
I don't have a problem with the nine.
It's a zoning compliant lot.
Yeah, I understand that. That's why I'm interested in seeing your next submission.
Well, we did include a conservation layout with this.
Well, wait a minute. Wait a minute, one step at a time. That's why I asked if there are any other concerns. Do we want to move ahead and accept the nine lot count?
So I think what you're looking for this evening is a concurrence on nine lots.
Right, essentially, what we're looking for is some acknowledgement from the board that the conventional nine lot subdivision that we presented is valid. And the applicant is seeking permission, at the board's discretion, to pursue a conservation subdivision on this parcel. Based on what we discussed at the last meeting, we've obviously provided that layout in preliminary fashion to discuss. But before we can actually proceed with that, we need some verification that the nine lots is satisfactory.
Right, so what we're looking at, right, the criteria, Serret's office, does it have the right dimensions? Is it the right size? Is it the right frontage? My office, can all the utilities work? Can the stormwater work? Is there enough room for a septic? Is there enough room for a wall? Does all those dimensionally work? And I'm saying yes. And I think Serret has said yes.
And Serret said yes.
Right, none of that means that, you know, the board still is the board and you can make your determinations. So our role at this point is, will the stormwater work? Does the access work? Does the water in sewer work? I'm saying yes. Serret, do the dimensions work? She's saying yes.
Yes. And is everybody else satisfied?
Yeah, I'm satisfied that it works.
And I think we are in agreement. Nobody said no. So do we now?
Do we need an action on that, Joe? To get them to, now to move into a discussion on, is it?
Do we take a vote? Or do we just move to the?
No, because I think it's the town board ultimately that needs to make that.
No, no, no.
You're thinking of, you're thinking of common driver.
It's only the planning board that can request if the applicant is not, if the applicant is proposing a conventional and was not seeking to do a conservation. The planning board is the one empowered to not only request, but require a conventional. So a conservation. So in this case, the tables got turned a little bit because the applicant actually said they wanted to do the conservation subdivision. So all that needs to happen. There's nothing that I read that requires a vote by anybody.
I agree.
We just have to.
On the conservation, it just needs to be verified that they meet all the requirements.
That's my understanding.
Which is why I asked if everybody agreed.
Yeah, my only concern had been in the field with Lot One because of the slopes and the.
I think if you look at the conventional subdivision, you're going to like what you see for Lot One.
Yeah, because that was the one. So if you have a buildable lot for purposes of finding the nine lots the way it's configured, even if the driveway is a bit, you really want to do it, then I'm absolutely fine with moving on to a conservation subdivision.
So in this case, it's really the board saying, yes, they agree. Nine lots are viable. And you're not forcing them to go to a conservation.
No, we don't have to.
You're just telling them that you will review their proposed conservation subdivision.
Right, so at this point, it may be, although, like I said, our comments were solely focused right now on the conventional.
Correct.
Many of those comments are going to just be copied over into the new memorandum, into the memorandum when we start talking about the conservation. But it probably makes sense to flip that map over right now. And because the board might have input on the conservation now, that could be reflective in the next submittal.
Yes.
Move it so it's a little easier for us to see it instead. Thank you, that's great.
I should also say, I don't know if anybody had an opportunity to read my memo, but I did take the next step and start reviewing the conservation subdivision itself.
So now, why don't you walk the board through the conservation elements and how you're doing this?
So, as Joe discussed, and as was discussed in the sidewalk in the field, one of the main concerns was Lot One. Lot One, although a viable lot, did have a significant amount of steep slope disturbance associated with the development for Lot One. And actually, as Mr. Prince mentioned in the previous application, this parcel was upzoned from an R eighty to an R one twenty in the nineties. So we were using the R one twenty zoning requirements, which required 250 feet of frontage to demonstrate our conventional lot layout. We designed the conservation subdivision to provide a minimum lot size of roughly 100,000 square feet. The adjacent properties are all R eighty. So the conservation subdivision would be generally consistent with the character of the neighborhood and surrounding lot sizes of the properties in the R eighty zone. We configured it to, with the intent of reducing impervious surfaces associated with the construction of the road. We, by applying conservation zoning and the subsequent reduced frontage requirements, were able to reduce the total town road construction by about 250 feet. The other benefit of the conservation subdivision is we've minimized steep slope disturbance, most notably with Lot One. You'll see on Lot One, which previously on the conventional subdivision was essentially a two and a half acre lot, generally consisting mostly of steep slopes. Lot One has been in large, a total of seven acres. Now, approximately four of that would be permanently deed restricted land in conservation. And most of that land consists of environmentally sensitive, steep slopes. We've relocated the basin to the preferred location that's carried through to the conventional conservation as discussed with Joe. And we relocated the house on Lot One to essentially eliminate any potential visual impacts and minimize any temporary construction related impacts to the existing residents at the south end of Cobbling Rock Drive. We're still proposing town roads with the reduced frontage requirement applied from conservation zoning. The, about 10, 10.2 acres of land would be placed in deed restricted conservation. Again, mostly consisting of environmentally sensitive wetland buffers, steep slopes, wetlands. The two large parcels you see is Lot Five and Lot One, which contain the deed restricted areas. Those would be essentially, there would be no homeowner association formed. It would just be, the owners of each one of these lots would have a deed restriction declaration over their property. This is an approach that was used. I believe Serret had mentioned a couple of DeSiena and Tamarack and Vine.
Yes, correct.
Similar approach where land was conserved through deed restriction on the individual parcels. So again, you know, the intention is with the conservation plan, which is the preferred layout, I believe is a more desirable subdivision layout. It preserves what the intent is of the conservation zone, preserve that environmentally sensitive and ecologically sensitive lands and concentrate the development on the more desirable land.
How many acres in Lot Five?
Lot Five is 13.2 total with 6.23 in conservation. And there is the opportunity for more land on Lot Five to be in conservation, to be quite honest with you. There's, this is all environmentally sensitive, very steep slopes. Very difficult to develop. You know, I don't, applicant sit right next to me. I don't think he'd mind if that conservation easement grew a little bit.
No, it wouldn't matter. Do anything with that property. Would it? But actually, we turned the worst lot, which was Lot One, into one of the best lots.
One of the nicest lots, yes.
Yeah, I like the comment that I looked at both of your plans. I think, I think what you've done here is beneficial for you. It's beneficial for the town. It's beneficial for the environment. And I think you did it, as far as I could see so far, you did an excellent job of taking advantage of what the conservation district wanted to, zoning wanted to accomplish. And I commend you on this layout. So I think it's very well done.
I have one question, though. As you led up to this, when you first blindsided us with your desire to do, you talked about people in the neighborhood wanting to still have access. People in the neighborhood who already lived there still having access to existing trails. Well, that upset me. When somebody buys a million dollar home, you want to be in control of your own land. I don't think we are empowered to do something like that.
I will say, I'm going to say that I misspoke.
I hope so.
You know, the intention of, as you said.
I can understand.
Somebody buys a million dollar home, they want their property. You know, this will be private property, but it will be deed restricted in conservation. That's the intention. It's not for public access or public recreation.
Plus, on the north side and the south side, we're right, it's all D P property.
Right, well, this is Lazden Park. South side, this is D P, and this is D P. So the south and east side.
You enter it anyhow.
Exactly.
It was just a statement that was made as you pushed into saving open space. That's not one of the reasons you do that.
No, you know, our intention was really, you know, looking at the conservation zoning section of the town code. It enables for this flexibility of the design and development of subdivisions to accomplish our design intent, which really was to reduce impervious surface, minimize deep slope disturbance, preserve environmentally sensitive lands, which I believe that we're putting our best foot forward with this layout.
That happens to be a beautiful neighborhood, by the way. When we went to that sidewalk in August, we were just overwhelmed by existing.
Yeah, it's a gorgeous neighborhood. And this is a beautiful piece of land.
The way we approached it, and we looked at this over and over and over and over. And, you know, a lot of those people are my friends.
Well, you lived there.
I lived in that neighborhood. I've lived there 28 years. So, you know, I have to be very sensitive that I'm not offending my people whose homes I had built in the past, you know? And I think this is the best approach. And I think it's less, least invasive to all these, as far as tree cutting and everything else. I think it works out to be a beautiful neighborhood.
I would agree. I think based on my recollection of the sidewalk and our, with Tim Allen and Jennifer there this summer, that what you have as a plan there really conforms to what makes sense for the properties. And it's, yeah, it's perfect.
I have a small question on.
No, seriously, based on what we looked at there, this makes absolute sense. We were concerned, standing there, about Lot One, it jumped off.
Oh, God, yes.
A problem at the time.
Yes.
Listen, we can make Lot One even nicer if we lower the basin down to the bottom. I don't think that's.
No, that's going to fly.
Good try, good try.
That was also one of the concerns, was that you have to be able to.
The question, on Lot Five, this is obviously a very minor point, but the, your driveway sort of comes parallel to the lot line. And then, as it approaches the cul-de-sac, it sort of bends in. My question is, is that done to orient the driveway in a specific way to that cul-de-sac? Or could it, because it's, you're entering it right at the property line.
It could certainly be shifted a little bit. You know, again, this was sort of a preliminary layout. And the final layout of each lot will be developed further as we proceed with this conservation subdivision.
That's just, it's a minor point, but I was just, I just saw that.
Well, I think that could certainly be tweaked a little bit to give a little more room between the property line and driveway.
Yeah.
I don't see any issue with that.
Because somebody's going to want to boost some planting there and things like that.
And if, you know, I don't know how far you guys walked back, but this actually is a gorgeous part of the property.
Yeah, no, we saw it. It was.
That's one of the more scenic.
It's beautiful.
Scenic areas on the property, actually.
Yeah.
So essentially, what I would like to ask the board and discuss with you, if we can proceed with this, if the board is agreeable to allowing the applicant to apply conservation zoning and proceed with a conservation subdivision, the next steps moving forward, if we can move to scheduling a public hearing in February to.
I think, yeah, for me, I think if the board was amenable to moving in this direction, which it sounds like we are, I think the next step is now we got to give you our comments on this, which I think are going to be, you're going to get a jumpstart on them because many of them are already in the memo already. I think we get those addressed to a better point in January. And I think in January, we can set the public hearing for February. I think we're on that schedule right now, is what it seems like to me.
Okay, we'll set it in January for February. Or can we set it now? We don't have everything we need.
I mean, it's a majority.
I think we should wait. I think we should wait.
No, we don't have everything we don't.
Yeah, I think we should wait. But I think that we would absolutely be in a position to have this scheduled in January. I think, you know, let's get the formal submittal.
You mean, in January, set it for February.
Set it for February. I think we're looking at a February public hearing.
Okay.
And anticipate that in work with Joe's office to make sure that you've got everything.
Yes.
We're in for the January.
Yeah, because I'm sure you're going to want to open and close that in a single night. And then you're going to be asking for preliminary approval at that night. So we're going to, you know, give us some time to get ready for that because I know then you got to get the health department.
The way he phrased it was excellent, to put the board in the best position to act on the application as soon as possible. That's really, that's really what we're after as consultants and professionals.
He's going to charge you, Phil. You're not crossing out over.
All right.
All right, I think that's all you need for tonight, right? I think that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everyone, happy holidays.
Same to you.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Ready to 2020?
Happy holidays.
See you next year.
Y two K, right, Y two K seems like it was yesterday, right? Twenty years ago.
Twenty years ago.
We have a.
Right, doesn't it seem like yesterday? Y two K.
Good night. We have an item Somers Realty land donation.
Rich, you're up. Rich, you're up.
Joe, just a question. On the conservation land, again, I'm ignorant enough that much about this. Is there any, is there any maintenance? Is there any requirement? Or it's just?
It's the same as if it was. It's just a smaller, better, you know, give them flexibility in the configurations to, you know, protect environment and to minimize impervious surfaces. But as far as town's obligations, nothing changes. It's be simple lots, they take care of their lots. Everything is the same. We plow our roads, they take care of their, everything's, you know, consistent. It just provides design flexibility is all it is.
Okay. And smaller lots. They don't take care of their roads because there will be two town roads.
That's what I just said. I said, town takes care of the roads. It's the same.
All right, this is...
Land donations, we like land donations.
This is Somers Realty land donation, and...
So, good evening, Rich Williams Insight. I'm here in a unique capacity tonight, as I'm not asking for anything, but trying to give you something.
Right.
No, so I think this came from the town board as a referral. When we went through the Somers Realty Plan Hamlet, there was, always talks about the back parcel. Road D was actually extended to it. So I brought with me an aerial, just so that everybody can understand the parcels we're talking about. You can see US Route Six, Mayapack Avenue, Route 118, the preserves at Somers, Lake Shennerock, Stonewall Farms. Here you have Cagle Park, which is a town park, Green Tree Road, and Somers Realty Plan Hamlet with Avalon, Artis, Muse One, Muse Two, and Somers Commons. This little stretch right here is Road D that was recently completed as part of the Avalon development. It was always envisioned to be a town road. Somers Realty owns just a little more, about 55.1 acres behind Avalon that runs north to south, parallel and adjacent to the North County Trailway. My client, Somers Realty, is looking to get out of the development business. They believe they've partnered with the town very well for many years to develop Somers Realty Plan Hamlet. There still is the commercial piece, which they're currently trying to market and see if they can find a buyer for. But when it comes to the back parcels, we've studied them, we've done some feasibility studies. They can get numerous lots back there. There is the opportunity to connect it with the neighboring property to the west, which also has an access through Avalon to create a larger residential development. But they're looking to dissolve the company in the foreseeable future and move on to other things. So as we started talking about what that meant, for these properties, we thought there might be an opportunity to give back to the town that we've partnered with so well. We see it as an opportunity because the properties are nicely forested, it is adjacent to the trailway, and it almost does form a connection with Cagle Park that gets you all the way up to Somers Commons. So that's really what we're here for tonight. We've, we've sent this information to the town board. We've walked the property with Steve Wolfle, Supervisor Morrissey, the Open Space Committee, and the Park and Rec Board. This has been referred to all the boards and agencies as well. But we think this is a win for the town to pick up 55 acres.
Oh, it is, absolutely. I'm very familiar with the, with it, and we'd just like to comment on the two parcels that hug the trailway. I have photographs that I took, I use that trailway for years since it's, even before it became a park, when it was the abandoned trailway. I have pictures that I took one day because I couldn't believe it the first time I came upon it. Thirty-five turtles, oh, snapping turtles, of course, I'm sure, of all bearing age in one of the wetlands. It's just, it's really just lovely land, lovely.
My understanding is the Open Space Committee was excited at our proposal.
Oh, yeah, yes.
How big is that parcel?
They're just going to say that you're interested. I will write your recommendation to the town board.
Just how big is the parcel in total?
Fifty-five acres.
Fifty-five acres.
Totals. And one is 33 and the other is 37. I think they total 60...
This northern parcel here is 18.2, and this southern piece is 36.9. I think it totals 55.1.
So the total is what?
55.1.
Fifty-five acres, yeah. So what I have is 33 plus 37, so I take your numbers as being more accurate.
We actually pulled them from the assessment rolls. That's, those are the acreages, the assessments.
Okay. I just think it's wonderful. It's already wonderful land, already appreciated by the people who go through there. And I'm sure the property owners, on the other side of the trailway, is privately owned homes that have in their backyard ponds and what have you, that are part of the wetland network that goes through there. I'm sure they'll be pleased.
So can we comment back that we think this is a great opportunity for the town? And we appreciate the consideration generosity of the developer and their small quest.
And he lives down in the village.
He does?
You don't put that in the memo.
As a new town board member, what, who would get the, like, who would be responsible for that property? I mean, is it, is it in the auspices of open space, parks and rec, just the town itself? Like who's, for all intents and purposes, who's going to own it from the town, right? Like where does that go?
Or who's going to maintain it?
Who's going to maintain it? I don't know how much maintenance you're going to require on this, but I just want to know, like, if we...
Parks and Recs doesn't have to mow anything, I'll tell you that.
It has to be a town department.
Right.
So it's probably going to be Parks Department, whether and what they will do to maintain this. Probably not very much. It's just there for some potential person who could be considered, or whatever.
Rich, I don't want to...
This is Cagle Park, and the parcels are here.
No, no, I know where it is, I just wanted to know, so we donate it to the town, and then, so, like, what are we doing with it? We own the land, right?
It's very similar, if you think of next to Hidden Meadows, there's also Zappy Park is up there, right? It's the same kind of a thing. They donated that land.
Just put a sign and say it's a park.
It's ultimately earmarked
Right.
for parks at some point. Nobody takes, there's nothing going on over there, but we've looked at putting athletic fields there, for example. Maybe the parks decides, hey, maybe we want to put a walking trail or some, I don't know. There's already a highway trail.
You got a big trail there already, but yeah.
I don't know what it would be. It probably just going to remain as open space.
Yeah, okay.
I don't want to be a wet blanket, but my question, what, what's the taxes on this property?
Off the top of my head, I don't know.
I'm sure the town board is thinking about that.
The town board, the town board is definitely thinking about that.
They already thought.
I'm sure it's not assessed because it's wetlands and it isn't usable. So I'm sure he has a low, on those parcels, I'm sure it doesn't bring in a lot of revenue.
Yeah, it's undeveloped land.
It's undeveloped land, and I'm sure it doesn't bring in a lot. I understand your question, it's a good question, but I don't think the loss to the town is that great.
Yeah, and that clearly is one of the considerations that the town board makes when it
Takes something.
is facing a requested donation.
But I bet he gets a nice tax write-off.
And that's one of the reasons why I asked that. So if, you know, if we can't use the land for development that would create revenue through taxes, then what can we do with it, right? And so to sort of offset where you would say, wow, this would, this would be, I don't know, $20,000 a year in taxes. Well, so what can we do then to sort of offset that? Like to equate a value of that loss to turning it into, for public good, right? If we could turn it into a park, or if we could put it into something else? Like, while I do understand that there's funding involved in all of that stuff, sometimes I question why we just take all this land all the time and we can't do anything with it, or we don't do anything with it.
I will point out, Road D does enter this lot, right? So I haven't looked a lot. My presumption is that out of 55 acres, it's not all undevelopable, and there's probably areas, you mentioned, you could put 11 houses on it if you chose to. Maybe there's something that winds up at the back end of Road D, but there's been no study on what could be done. I don't, I think it would be, to say it's all undevelopable and no opportunity, I don't think is, I think there's, I haven't walked it, but I'm looking at the aerials and knowing the area, my sense is there will be, would be some kind of an opportunity on the backside of Road D.
There is a wetland that runs north, south through the central portion of the property that we did have flagged.
Yes, it's huge, yeah.
It's...
That Road D crosses, that's the same one that Road D crosses?
No, it doesn't actually cross. There's, so behind Meadow Park, there's a pond here that then feeds a low point. And basically, that comes all the way down through and crosses under the bike trail in the southeast corner.
Right, so that area behind the shopping center, there's, it looks like there's some opportunity there if the town chose to do something.
There's, there's an entire strip of property that actually fans this way, that's high and dry.
Okay, so our recommendation, I guess you got enough from us?
Tell the town board we like the idea. Is that what we had to get out of this?
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
That's it.
That's it.
That's in the unofficial way, just tell them it's cool.
Just say neato.
Yeah, right. Thank you, you too. Happy New Year.
All right, we have one more item, and that is...
It's just a calendar.
That's it, no calendar.
No, we have one more item. We have to adopt
Oh, the calendar.
the calendar for next year. So we have it in front of us. I have no comments about it, other than to note that two of our meetings, one in April and one in November, will not be on the second Wednesday. Instead, they will be on the third Wednesday, probably because of holidays. Are we, shall we take a vote to adopt it?
Yes.
Yes. Barbara, will you entertain a pollus on a vote? Okay, the motion is to adopt the calendar for 2020.
I'll make a motion to adopt it.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I guess it's passed.
Beautiful.
All right, I recommend that we adjourn the meeting until next year on January 8th.
September 21st?
I'll second the motion to adjourn. Want to do that?
That's a good idea.